All right, all right, all right. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see, good to see your faces. I know we're live streaming just for informational purposes for those who wanted to join us. But at this point, I think we've got pretty much everybody who is out on the garden court in. So with that, I will gavel our special membership meeting. And at this point, I would love to turn it over to Reverend Pat for some opening comments and an opening prayer.
Thank you. You know, first of all, I just got to say, I don't hardly know how to act. I never have. But the bottom line is, 17 years, and this is the first special meeting that this church has called in 17 years. So I appreciate very much your attendance here. And I'm grateful, I'm so grateful that this meeting has been called for this purpose, and not some of the other purposes that it could or may have been. So we are just grateful that you're with us today. So join me on prayer. Loving and gracious divine presence within. We gather here today as a spiritual community, united in our shared vision of inclusivity and compassion, and much more. As we embark on this meeting to vote on the proposed resolution, sweet Holy Spirit within, we invite your divine guidance to be with each of us. As we embark on this journey, we ask for your blessings upon our collective efforts. We give thanks that our decisions are inspired with open hearts, open hearts to embrace change that is needed. And may this remodeling endeavor be a testament to our commitment to embody love and compassion and acceptance. With gratitude in our hearts, we affirm this prayer, giving thanks that we continue on the path of creating a fully accessible and welcoming space for all. We pray this in the nature of the Christ presence, and we say, thank you, God. Amen. Again, I want to thank each of you for being here today. And I know, and I affirm, that each of you will be guided by that divine spirit that lives within you. I give thanks for our current Board of Trustees, and Nancy Merritt will introduce them in just a few moments. But I want to acknowledge several groups realizing that as I do this, it can be dangerous sometimes. Not because you don't love me, but because I could leave someone out. And if I do, I will try to ask for your forgiveness. So I'd like, first of all, to begin by, is anyone, those that have served ever on our Board of Trustees, I'd invite you to please stand for a moment, ever. I want you to look around the room. Wow, wow. Thank you. And please be seated. And then I want to acknowledge those that stepped off the board because they were term limited. They might not have been the quarterback, but they did a lot to take this ball this far. So I want to acknowledge especially those that have worked so hard, pre-COVID especially. And that would be Margie Olson. Margie's our former Board President. I don't believe she's here today, but she worked and held this vision. So I appreciate that. Greg Peterson is here today. Greg, we appreciate you. We thank you so much. Judith Killian said she was, Judith, there you are, sweetheart. We hold you, and we give, we give thanks for your dedication. And Jim Nepp is not with us today. He sends his love. Of all things, he's got his convertible riding in the pride parade. Can you imagine that? That is so, Jim. I want to acknowledge Mike Smith, who has given hundreds of volunteer hours as he has served as the Chair of the Transformational Facilities Committee, it seems like for an eternity, Mike, but I know it has not been that. He has served this committee as an ad hoc committee that reports directly to our Board of Trustees. Mike Smith, where are you? We appreciate you. Thank you. I want to acknowledge the chairs of our different streams of work that is happening right now. Mike, we've acknowledged you. Nancy Mello serves as our communication, our Communication Director. Our finance is Sherry Ziegloff with our Treasurer, Michael Showalter. And Sharon Payne has served as our Reach, as our Reach Team Leader. I would like to acknowledge these and stand, if you don't mind, just for a moment. We want to see you. I want to also acknowledge all of those that were involved with our Horizon stewardship, our all-in campaign. Some of you really took some wonderful leadership in that. And if you did, involved in that, I would invite you to stand and let us see you as well. Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I also want to acknowledge our wonderful staff. You know, operations is a full-time job. And we have taken, the staff has taken, I think that's America the Beautiful that's playing. So thank you, thank you for that. Let's appreciate that music this morning. Thank you. I love it, I love it. I want to also acknowledge our staff that has worked so hard on this project and truly believes in what we're doing. And as Michael Showalter, our Board Treasurer, acknowledged not too long ago, that of the pledges that's come in, 36% of that represents our Board of Trustees and our staff. So I want to acknowledge our wonderful staff, especially our Executive Director, Nancy Mayo. So let's say, Nancy, came in from vacation to do this. We know how important your vote is. Yes, thank you for being here. And if I've missed anyone, I sincerely apologize. I do. And I know that all of you who've been involved, I want to thank you for, I want to thank you for all the pledges that you've made, that you have said yes to this, that you've dug deep in your pockets to make this happen. So I thank you for those pledges, and I thank you in advance for those pledges to come. We appreciate that as well. So with that, we have a wonderful Board President here. And Nancy Merritt, I'm going to turn that back over to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Reverend Pat. The agenda today, you know, this should be a pretty quick meeting with any, with any luck. We're going to do some introductions. I'm going to do that in a minute. I'm going to briefly recap what we covered on June 11th, just very high level. June 11th was our congregational meeting where we gave all the information to get us ready for this meeting. I'm going to introduce the resolution, which you have on your hand. We're going to vote. Those registered members that are here are going to vote. We're going to gather those. Those are going to be counted by two of our Board of Trustees and two of our prayer chaplains. They're going to be gathering those votes and counting them. And then we're going to be giving a report on what the vote is, and a closing prayer today. And then we'll adjourn. So that's really the agenda. But before we get started, I want to just make sure that I introduce our dear Board of Trustees, so that you know everybody who's here, and, and the roles that they play in this, in our board at this point. So I am Nancy Merritt. I'm currently serving as President of the Board. And Dr. Rita Webster, where are you, Rita? She's there waving her hand. She is our Vice President of the Board. Michael Showalter is our Treasurer. Jay Joyner is our Assistant Treasurer. Teresa Beldon is our Secretary, dutifully taking notes as we speak. And Sue Warner is our Member at Large. So I want to say thank you, as Reverend Pat did to this board. There's been a lot of work that's gone into getting ready for this meeting today. And they're a fabulous team to travel with. So I want to just thank them as well. So we held a congregational meeting on June 11th. And originally, it was to share the most recent information that we had on the building transformation and make sure everybody had what they needed to get ready for this meeting today. So that meeting was to answer questions and make sure people had all their thoughts out and had the information that they needed. It was open to both registered members and non-registered, anybody who wanted to attend. And I'm going to talk in a little bit, the difference between that meeting and this meeting in terms of being a registered member. We'll get into that in a moment. It was recorded. It was available for people to view so that they had time to look at that before we came to this meeting. The purpose of today's meeting is to vote on pledging our real property for financing to complete this building transformation. So what you're going to be voting on today as a registered member is pledging our real property against any financing we will need to get this building complete. That's the purpose of today. I'm going to be referencing, it's going to be so exciting. I'm going to be referencing our bylaws during this meeting. But it's important that you know that we are governed by bylaws. So we follow those. That's how we structure all the work that we do as a board. And I want to make sure I call out pertinent parts to clear up any confusion or just clarify what it is that we're doing today. But first, I want to highlight some of the information that we shared with you at our congregational meeting on June 11th. We shared several things. One was, how much can we spend and how did we get there? And Michael Showalter gave us a really good overview of how we arrived at the overall project budget of 3.66 million, and why we believe that's the affordable and the right number for our building and our congregation. And that was done through extensive internal and external due diligence with external partners and, and obviously, our internal finances and the board themselves. The funds for this project include our capital campaign pledges. Thank you, everyone, for the generosity that we have shown as a congregation in those pledges. And it also includes cash reserves that we've dedicated to this building project, as was explained at that meeting, and recommended financing that we're going to go forward with to cover the gap that we need for this building, with a second capital campaign to close that financing out in the future. We then went into what's possible now. And Rita Webster stood up and talked about the plan, which you have a copy of today. It's a, again, it's not a final plan, because we don't have the vote yet. And when we do, we're going to be going forward with getting all the work done where you actually get bids and final drawings and all of that in place so that we know what it actually can be. But this is our best estimate with our architects at this point. And keeping in mind that our goal is to include the possibility of add-ons to the project pending any final pricing and project contingencies. So we've built some conservatism, as we talked about, into this project to cover unexpected costs. If those don't occur, or more money comes in, we'll be adding on and have a way to work our way through doing that. Full accessibility is a cornerstone, but there's much more as part of this building, as you've seen. That's going to add to the beauty of our congregation and its meeting place. We also clarified the use of our reserve funds and how they've been allocated for use on the building and for, and a reserve that's going to be kept for operating expenses. And we talked about the importance of supporting both our long-term dream, which is the building and its transformation, and also continuing to support our ongoing operations as a ministry. And the goal of the board, and I know of us, was we weren't going to sacrifice the future ministry for the building. And that's why we came up with the amount that we're splitting between the building and ongoing operating expenses. So that's really what we covered. And then we took some questions and answered those questions as best we could. So on May 22nd, 2023, the Board of Trustees voted to call a special meeting of our registered members today to vote on a resolution to pledge this real property to secure a loan for our building improvement. And following our bylaws, a letter and the resolution was sent to all registered members of Unity Minneapolis. And you got a copy of that today, too, as you came in. So you have the resolution with you. And anybody that didn't get one, that needs one, just raise your hand. Should have all gotten it at the door. I think everybody should be okay. All right. So as I said, our vote today is to pledge real property for financing. And we estimate right now that that financing is anywhere between 1 and 2 million. And the reason we don't have the exact amount is because we don't know yet the start date and the final pricing. And we also don't know the full timing of the campaign contributions. So as those come in, those will pay off any of the financing that we get. And then we will use the remainder of, close out the remainder of that financing through a second capital campaign in the future. So that amount will be firmed up. But to give you an estimate, that's kind of the range we're looking at right now. So a comment on participation in this meeting, this is where it gets fun with the bylaws. So according to our bylaws, the powers of registered members are really described in those bylaws. And it states that you, as a registered member, have the power to vote on the sale or pledge of real property for anything exceeding $25,000. So that's why we're all here today. A two-thirds yes vote of the registered members present and voting is required for approval. So that is in the bylaws that people actually need to be here and voting. So it's, it's the two-thirds of the people voting in this room that will cause this to either go forward or not. And also, while we've kept this meeting open to whoever wishes to attend, the bylaws also talk about participation. And participation in the business affairs of any membership meeting is restricted to the registered members that are in attendance today. Participation of other persons in discussion of the business has to be approved by a majority vote of the registered members in attendance. So if there's someone here today, and we're going to use the honor system, if you have a ballot, you're a registered member, and, and you can participate, participate, ask a question, et cetera. If you're not, and you really feel the need to do that, we do have to vote that it's okay. So we're hoping to keep that to a minimum, and that's why we had the meeting on earlier in June, was to really help everybody come forward. But I just wanted to clarify that and describe kind of how the meeting works today. And then also, just to clarify on absentee voting, because I know that can cause a little bit of confusion, I think, for some folks. There is an allowance, and it's the only one in our bylaws, for absentee voting. And that is specifically for the board candidate elections at the annual meeting. For those of you who have attended annual meetings, you've gotten absentee ballots in the mail. That's according to our bylaws. It's the only vote that we can take as an absentee voter. So that's it for the bylaws. But I hope it helps clarify kind of how do we have to operate this meeting today. So before we go forward, since the majority of the information was really shared in June, this is really to do the, the mechanics of our voting process. I'd like to ask if there are any remaining questions from the registered members prior to voting that we can help answer. Yes?
I did go out to the Unity site, and I was looking for the recording for the June 11th prior to coming here. Unfortunately, I was not able to find it, but I hear anyway. So thank you for recapping what was covered. And I would love some time to be able to review that.
Sure. Okay. So what she had said, for those of you who couldn't hear, is she went out to try and find the recording, couldn't find it. So we'll clarify that, apologize that you weren't able to do that. I'm glad the recap helped a little bit. And we'll get you some support so that you can go watch that. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Hans.
I noticed that we're planning on having a second capital campaign to retire the mortgage. Is that, is that according to one of the, is that what all churches do, or some churches just have a mortgage?
Yeah, it's a good question. So Hans is asking, we're planning on a second capital campaign to retire the financing, the mortgage, or the loan for this building. And is that normal? And as we talked about in June, what we found out, and what we learned as a board, as Nancy Merritt really learned during this process, too, is really normal. Can I say all churches do it? No. Was it really normal according to our Horizons, who we, who we partnered with in terms of this campaign? Yes. Are the lender that we visited with in terms of our potential financing? Absolutely. They were expecting it and wondering when we were going to do it. So it's really common, very, very common. I can't say everybody, but yes. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Did we have a mortgage before this?
We had a mortgage before this and it's paid off. And I don't remember when, Reverend Pat. Several years ago, it was retired. Yeah. Yes, Markey.
Can you have a quick recap of what these colors?
Oh, sure. So Markey's asking for a quick recap on what these colors mean. And if I goof this up, oh, team, let me know. But the drawing that you have in front of you, everything to the left of the red line is new.
Are we on the upper side of the road?
You're on either side. Anything to the left of the red line is new building. And if you look at that, again, this is a draft. It's what we envisioned based on current estimations. And we're still working through those to be able to potentially add on more to the second floor than we have in this drawing. And that's, we're going to wait to do any more drawings with Van Man, who is our architect, until we get the go-ahead with this, because that does cost money to go do that. So we want to make sure that we have this, this work done before we go back to them. But everything to the left is new. I don't know that the floor or the colors particularly mean much, other than to help separate out. Or Mike, help me here. He's got his hand up. Do you want to come up here so we, or, that's all right.
So the colors, the yellow is fellowship space. So friendship hall, the garden court, the sanctuary, the orange is worship space, the sanctuary. Green is office space, office space. And gray is platform.
I can't hear what it says about, it's not even.
We had talked at one point about replacing the wall, because it had a little bit of molding. But the structural engineers tell us that that's not good to do that right now. And with the building costing, that's one option, certainly not.
Yeah, so this back wall.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that for the interpreter?
I'm sorry?
I couldn't hear any of it.
So one of the things we had talked about in the past is replacing the back wall of the sanctuary. Yep, that, this wall, it has a slight bow in it. But the structural engineers tell us that it's still structurally safe.
Yep, sound. So there was a method to the madness on the colors. Thank you, Mike. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Well, at this point, then, what we're going to do is Rita and Jay from our board, and then Margie Black and Julie Fransel Nelson are going to come forward. We're going to do the ballots like we do offering. I love offering. So if you get your ballots ready and make your decision, they're going to come down the aisles. And how this is going to work is they will gather the votes together, they will leave the sanctuary and count those four. They will come back and tell us what that result is. So in that quiet time, you're welcome to have conversation or whatever. It should not take long. So get your ballots ready, and they'll be down the aisle. Don't go anywhere. They'll be right back. To say that? I'll say it. While we're waiting for the vote, one of the things that I have failed to do so many times as President of the Board is to acknowledge that Reverend Pat serves on the Board of Trustees. I just hold him up here. So when I have, when I introduce the board, I introduce everybody else all the time, and I forget to introduce Reverend Pat. He is a board member. He does vote on the board. And so, and he attends all the meetings. His president just doesn't do it right. Anyway, talk amongst yourselves. We'll be done in a moment. Don't go anywhere. Two-thirds, two-thirds. I was looking at a different section. Yep. Yep. All right. All right, all right. We have our, we have our, yes, Reverend Pat, why don't you join me up here? That would be great, if you would. Our drummer left. So again, our bylaws require that two-thirds of the registered members in attendance and voting need to approve this ballot. And it is approved by 105 people out of 109 people who are here. So I think we. Wow. Awesome, awesome, awesome. I was telling someone, I've never had a child, but it feels, feels like we've been in labor for a very long time, so. Bless everyone here, thank you for all your votes, yes, no, it doesn't matter, for participating in this and for being part of the journey. Because this is a journey, you know, this is stepping out into something new and bigger, and that always is growth, that's always good. So very grateful. And I've lost my train of thought a little bit with that because it's pretty cool. Would you have anything you'd like to say Reverend?
Oh, we're going to hurry out. Well, as a member of the board of trustees, yes. Oh my goodness, just thank you. You know, as you announced that, I thought the name of our campaign, All In, was pretty all-in. And to that, we are grateful. So the work, you know, we've said yes to this, we've said yes, and there's still stuff for us to do. There's action items for us to do. And I can assure you that this board will be calling on you with your time, your talent, and your treasure. Because we need now to move this on over the goal line. We do. And so with that, our closing prayer today, I'm going to invite you to just stand, let's just stand for a moment. Now then, I don't want you to join hands yet, but I want you to look around the room, just kind of look around the room, and I want you to see everyone else in this sanctuary. Okay, so now if you feel comfortable, join hands. And so sweet Holy Spirit within, we are just grateful for this time together, grateful for the outcome of this vote today. And we acknowledge and we affirm without a doubt that we are divinely guided for each step of the way, and that God within is truly the source of this project. So we surrender this over and over and over again to that divine spirit within. And for that, we are grateful. We give thanks for the clarity, we give thanks that we're able to move forward with confidence from this congregation to do what is ours to do. And together, we say thank you, God. Together, thank you, God. And again, thank you, God. And yet again, thank you, God.